Sounded like a work thing he was dealing with with his, uh, job.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, May 19th, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Rockland. Please join us. Direct your attention to Vice Chairman Larry Ryan for the Pledge of Allegiance. Larry?
The Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry.
Welcome.
Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS. The playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently recorded meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. Okay, so first on the agenda, uh, community announcements. Doug?
Thank you, Mike. I'm gonna, uh, share my screen briefly. Hopefully you can all see that. Uh, our Veterans Agent, Vinnie Fontaine, wanted me to publicly announce that in lieu of the Memorial Day Parade, the Allied Veterans Council would like residents to decorate their front door uh, to honor and remember those who gave so much for this country. And to take a photo and send it to rocklandveterans@gmail.com. So we have this flyer, uh, posted on Facebook and other, other places. Uh, but I just wanted to, let's see if I can mute Larry there. So I just wanted to mention that publicly, and again, this is posted on Facebook and on other places as well. Thought it's a, a nice thing to do. The next thing that I wanted to announce, here we go, is our, uh, latest Rockland Strong winner for the weekend in May 15th, and it is Brenda Moreno. And I'm just gonna read her, her brief statement that she put together for us. She wrote, "Hi there. My name is Brenda Moreno. I've lived in Rockland all my life. I knew in fifth grade, when my younger brother got sick, that I wanted to know how to help people when they were sick. I went to Boston College and earned my Bachelor's of Science in Nursing, and I've worked at Massachusetts General Hospital for 32 years. I work in neurology, medical ICU, and I am now a clinical nursing supervisor. As part of my job, I'm in the emergency rapid response nurse and code call nurse. And I also help support nurses in their work and triage patient, patients. I love being able to help people. Rockland is such a great community, and my neighbors have given me such support during this pandemic. I'm proud to live here. Thank you for this honor, Brenda." So I wanted to congratulate her and to thank her for everything she does. And again, all, all the winners that are chosen do receive a, a Rockland Strong shirt courtesy of Rockland Athletics. Now, I'm not sure, Mike, if you wanted to add anything more on that.
Yeah, so that, that was, uh, I actually, I was just about to bring that up. I, I actually have, uh, I have the T-shirts. So I'm just trying to figure out how we go about, uh, giving them to the, the winners.
Yep, you know what? If, if you just, we'll email Sue Ide, cause Sue's coming to the Town Hall and she'll take care of it. She'll make the arrangements.
All right, sounds great.
And next, I'm gonna turn it over to Jen, who has a couple of announcements. You're on mute, Jen. You're muted.
Thank you. A couple of quick reminders that there is a master plan workshop scheduled for this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM. That will be a Zoom event. Um, it'll be an online workshop in an open house, and it will consist of two, two different parts. One is the live Zoom meeting with some background information, and then there will be a second part that's an online open house room. And that'll be active through June, so residents, uh, businesses can, can access the, this online room to provide some input and get up to speed on, uh, where the master plan is at, at this point in time. The master plan, just as a reminder, will guide decision-making around land use, development, and preservation for the next 10 years. This particular section will focus on housing, uh, open space and recreation, clean energy and sustainability, as well as cultural and historic resources. You do need to register for the event, and you could find the registration link at MAPC. That's mapc.org/rmp, as in Rockland Master Plan 2030. So it's mapc.org/rmp2030. Kicked off, it's Rockland Rising Initiative, and that is an initiative to provide residents in need of assistance with face coverings, hot meals, groceries, and other community resources. We've established both a phone line and a dedicated email address where individuals reach out and expect a response within 24 hours, Monday through Friday. And they will at a minimum be put in touch with, um, a resource to assist them with whatever, uh, they may need assistance with at that point in time. The phone number is 781-261-1053, 781-261-1053. And the email address is rocklandrising@rockland-ma.gov. So rocklandrising@rockland-ma.gov. Thank you.
Okay, uh, anybody have any questions for, for Jen or Doug on any of the community announcements? Uh, Ryan?
I think, uh, she's doing a great job, uh, on top of everything, and a lot of people working with her to, at the same time. Excellent job, Jen. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
I saw Mr. Mullen join finally.
Thank you, Mr. Jen. Um, I do have a question, if I'm allowed to ask.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Jen, just a quick question. In terms of, um, uh, uh, you know, I've already, I've already been asked by a few Rockland residents how, um, how they might be able to get involved, uh, in to help Rockland Rising, or, uh, and if Rockland Rising is also accepting, um, like, any type of, um, donations from the community? Is there anywhere, uh, any information you have yet on that at all, by chance?
Sure, they can either reach out to myself, or Peg Bryant at the Senior Center, or, uh, Vinnie Fontaine at the Veterans Office. If they have, if they'd like to volunteer, and we could let them know how, we'll need, my expectation is, you know, we've started this on a smaller scale, and really, we don't have a lot of resources behind us, but we have a lot of resource information that we could put people in touch with. So, yes, we, we would love the help of the community. We're available, and in terms of resources, is the expectation is what we're hearing the most need for, so to be able to take donations through donations, but we will also be working with the food pantry and putting people in touch.
Okay, just muted yourself.
Where they might not be able to, um, you know, get to the food pantry, we're able to offer delivery services. Where they might not have a face covering, if we don't have one that we could provide to them, we can walk them through, we can create their own, um, face covering so that they feel more comfortable, you know, coming in.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Kara, anything?
No questions. Um, this is a great initiative. Great work, Jen. Thank you.
Rich?
Uh, no questions, but yeah, Jen, great job on this. Uh, I know this is, this is, uh, so needed. And I really appreciate all the effort you put in for this. It's great.
Thank you, Rich. That, and same, same for me, Jen. Thank you. What, what resources are you looking to, to have, uh, join, join this, uh, Rockland Rising with you? Uh, I, I saw that, that hot food is being offered. Is that, hot meals are being offered? Now, where is that coming from? Is that through, you know, restaurants? Is that through the Senior Center, or, or where?
So right now, it will be through the Senior Center.
Okay.
And again, if there, as we grow the program, if we, if we have a lot of requests for hot meals, we'll start reaching out to the restaurants and anyone that might be willing to participate. Um, and there might, might not be free to residents, but at the nominal cost, we're, we'll be willing to work with them both. You know, it has a dual effect of supporting the restaurant where possible, and they still have access to the food sources, and providing that household with a hot meal. So it's really gonna depend on who the call's coming from, and, you know, it's, uh, in an instance where somebody might just need information, they can remain anonymous. But obviously, if we need to put them in touch or deliver food to them, we'll need to, we'll need some contact information. And once we start, we'll be gathering the data. If we find that we have, um, a large request for groceries, and the pantry is not able to accommodate those requests, we'll start reaching out for, and taking in donations. Most likely, those will be collected at McKinley.
Sounds great. Thank you, Jen. All right, next item on the agenda, uh, open session minutes of May 5th, 2020.
Make a motion to approve the open session minutes of May 5th, 2020.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. Okay. Next on the agenda, new business, uh, Community Preservation Act Project Rental Assistance Program. Uh, back to Jen Constable.
Thank you, Mike. I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen with everybody. Doug, could you enable?
How about this? I'm not sure how to do that, but I think I can, I can run it on mine. How about that?
Okay, that's fine.
Jen, you should be able to do it now.
Thank you.
All right, you wanna try it, Jen, or do you want me to?
Yep, nope, I'm all set.
Okay.
Hey, can you guys see that? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about, um, or seek the board's support in establishing a temporary emergency rental assistance program utilizing community reinvestment, excuse me, CPA Community Preservation Act funds. And I'll give you a little bit of background, um, relative to, to Rockland. So in Rockland, the housing skate, the housing landscape, um, looks like this. It's about 25% renters and 74.5% homeowners. That's not too different from the statewide average of renters versus homeowners. In Rockland, this just shows you the ha, the housing burden on residents, which means that it's those residents that spend over 30% of their income on their housing costs, and those who are severely cost burdened, so they spend in excess of 40% of their income on housing. So in Rockland, 40% of all renters are, are housing cost burden, which is a significant amount. Approximately 20% of those households are severely cost burdened. Um, this indicates to me that there will likely be a significant need where we're seeing record unemployment rates, and, um, unemployment benefits are limited in time, and that extra $600 benefit, um, is only through July 31st. We're likely to see, if not now, in the near future, um, people facing issues around, um, rent, rental payments. In Rockland, 20% of all homeowners are housing cost burdened, with a little less than 5% being severely cost burdened. The employment impact on Rockland residents, um, there's been a significant impact industries in which Rockland residents are employed. And in fact, this is a crisis that has affected, you know, a, a wide ray of occupations. Between March 16th and April 11th, 571 unemployment claims were filed. We know this is a month later, um, those numbers have only continued to rise. 325,000 as of April 11th, um, of those claims represented the food and accommodation, retail trade, healthcare, social assistance, and constructions, construction, all occupation held by a significant number of Rockland residents. Food preparation and serving, office administration, and sales occupations have the largest number of claims, totaling approximately 40% of the overall permanent insurance claims. There's evidence that, evidence that the economic crisis has disproportionately impacted workers less than 30 years of age in low to moderate income households, um, that age bracket are likely to be renters versus homeowners. So again, another demonstration, um, that we're likely to see, and likely residents are already seeing, um, issues with, with rental pay. Assisting Rockland households impacted by the COVID crisis. Again, it's the, the ultimate goal is to prevent displacement and/or loss of housing for eligible Rockland residents who have suffered a loss of reduction income, or as a, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Right now, on the state and federal side, the assistance is only a moratorium for closures and evictions. So while this is helpful, this really doesn't help stabilize those households, and really is only a delay in an ultimate, um, potential eviction or foreclosure. And it's arguably, that doesn't go far enough. Locally, unfortunately, Rockland has CPA funds available where there, you're able to access your local funds to help your local residents. And again, that would be by establishing a rental assistance program, um, that would help bring households current on past due payments, or at least mitigate some of that outstanding balance, and help stabilize, um, the household. But it also is a multiplier where that money, um, behind every renter is a landlord, and that landlord likely has a mortgage, and owes, like, the rest of property owners', um, tax payments to the town, and so it further supports the local economy. Recommendations around program eligibility is that it's available only to Rockland residents. This is one of the few times when, um, this type of priority can be set, um, by a community as a result of the crisis. Household income should be at or below moderate income levels, uh, which is 100% of the area median income. Typically, programs max out at 80%. CPA allows up 100% AMI. I think that's a good thing, because you're able to extend that a little wider in terms of who you may be able to assist. And just to give you an idea of, of what 100% of the area median income looks like, for a family of four, that's $113,300. 80% of the area median income is an annual salary of, or gross income of $90,640. Eligible households would have to, um, document a loss or reduction in their income due to the, the COVID-19 pandemic. And monthly, the monthly maximum rental assistance amount should not exceed the fair market 2020 rents for the Boston, you can see, HUD Eric, HUD limits, which Rockland falls within that, that group. Based on the average monthly rent, rental in Rockland, it's estimated that Rockland could directly assist approximately 40, uh, local households. That'll vary depending upon the amount of assistance any one particular household, um, may apply for, or may be awarded. And as you can see, the rental, the average month, monthly rental cost in Rockland is between $1,000 and about $1,500. Recommended program guidelines are that it's a lottery selection, and so it's not a, a race to apply, but it's open to all residents, um, that would literally be lottery selection, um, at the end of the application period. Again, it's a temporary program. The recommendation is that it runs for a 12-month period. It's a grant program, so there would be no expectation that the households repay their rental assistance. Uh, they have to be an actual renter with an actual lease agreement. Homeowners, unfortunately, are only eligible if they have a pre-existing affordable housing covenant on their property, and those are CPA, um, regulations. Again, they'd have to demonstrate actual financial hardship as a result of the pandemic. Uh, they would be income qualified. Right now, one of the recommendations is maximum assistance of two months, maybe you could go three months. And around the program guidelines, I advise against being too restrictive or definitive at this point in time. I think the more flexible, the advice from the affordable housing, um, kinda world is to be as flexible as possible. And one of the rationales for that is, you know, should one, should additional funding become available, either through the state, or the federal government, or other programs? We can leverage that funding with the CPA funding in order to, you know, be able to assist as many households as possible, as opposed to tying ourselves into guidelines that might otherwise prohibit that type of action. Um, again, the monthly maximum assistance shouldn't exceed the HUD fair market, um, rates for FY '20. Payments would be made directly to the landlord, not to the homeowner, or, excuse me, the renter themselves. Other considerations that can be further explored is working with the landlord to see if they will reduce the rent, um, payment for a period of time for that household. Again, that will just further stretch the assistance, um, that the, that the household receives. Where possible, requiring the household to contribute to a portion of their rental income. And again, the, the goal, um, in those types of program requirements would be to spread the money as, as wide as possible. So the additional steps at this time, it has been presented to the Community Preservation Committee that unanimously supported, taking this action and utilizing $85,000 in CPA funds for the program, pending, um, a, a vote of the Board of Selectmen. The Finance Committee, I understand, and I think Doug will talk a little bit about this when we get to the warrant, would also, um, I don't know if I'm gonna use the right word here, authorize, um, placing this article on the warrant. And then ultimately, it would go to town meeting for a, a vote, um, by the town. We would be seeking, we could use a portion of that $85,000 to hire a third-party administrator. That is highly recommended, um, because it is fairly administratively heavy. And they would do things such as marketing the program, income qualifying applicants, negotiating with the landlord, um, and process and monitor landlord payments. We, you know, truthfully, wouldn't have the capacity in-house, um, to handle that workload. And then if you could bear with me for a moment, uh, this is just a quote I came across, um, putting this together, "We rise by lifting others." And one of the benefits to CPA is it is an opportunity for the local community, um, using its own money to put right back in, into the community, uh, for the greater good. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, uh, thank you, Jen. Uh, Mr. Mullen?
Hold on. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Not a lot. Look at that. I, I just did something to my screen. Sorry. All right, I'm back. I know, I don't have any questions. I think it's, uh, you know, I mean, the fact that we have this opportunity, uh, you know, to work with and help local residents, uh, through CPA, or, you know, through our own, oh, you know, through the own Rock, uh, the own funding of Rockland residents, um, I think it's extremely, uh, worthwhile, um, and needed right now, so I wanna thank Jen for all her efforts. Uh, you know, in getting this whole, um, program up and running, uh, you know, presenting it and telling it, uh, to the CPC, and, uh, uh, you know, I can bring it all this far, so, um, uh, uh, I think it's a great idea, and I wanted to thank Jen.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, Ms. Nyman?
Great presentation, Jen. I don't have any questions either. I think this is a win-win for the community, and I fully support this project.
Mr. Penny?
So I don't have any questions, and just to reiterate, Mr. Mullen and, and Ms. Nyman. Jen, great job on this, um, just like the, the program you just presented before this. I think there are so many families in need, and, um, it's just another, another thing that, uh, you and, and the whole team have been working diligently to find what's available out there to help the residents, so I just wanna say thank you.
Mr. Ryan? Larry?
Muted.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
We got you now.
You're doing a great job. Uh, seriously, I can't thank you enough. You have, uh, renewed my faith in, uh, administrative people, if you will, because really, no, you, you got a lot of stuff going, and, uh, and it's all going rather well. So, all the stuff that's going on, you can keep things going like this. Uh, thank you, thank you, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And ju- just for me, Jen, uh, you know, I, I just appreciate your follow-through on this. Uh, you brought this up, I, I think, while we were still, uh, meeting together in the, uh, Selectmen Room, uh, a- as a potential option, and, uh, the fact that you're able to put this, present this to us tonight, uh, is great. But just for the record, just for, uh, people watching at home, uh, the CPA, uh, Committee, uh, is for historic open space, parks, and housing, and this money would be coming from the housing portion that we have yet to use for any, any addition, any projects to date, right?
That's correct.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Jen. Great job on that. Thank you. All right, uh, next on the agenda, other new business. Doug, anything?
Nope, no new business.
Okay. Uh, number five, old business. Annual appointments continued. Kara, would you be willing to read those again?
Sure, let me just pull them up one second.
Thanks. Sorry, I put you on the spot.
No worries. Inspector of Animals, annual appointment, Ian Davidson, 490 Market Street. Charter Maintenance Committee, ad hoc, one-year term. Brian Kane, 2 Ash Street. William Linehan, 36 Hartstuff Street. Pierce McNally, 20 Birch Bottom Circle. Fence Viewer, this is an annual appointment. Thomas Rubel, 32 Nile Street, Abington. Fire Station Building Committee, this is an annual appointment. Charles Williams, 5 Topping Avenue. Memorial Committee, annual appointment. Vinnie Fontaine, 317 Plain Street. Old Colony Elder Services, Board of Directors, Rockland Representative. Karen Riley, 8 Studley Court. Rent Control Board, for three-year term. Deborah Robey, Rockland Resident Representative, 8 Midfield Drive. Sealer, Ways and Measures Inspector, annual appointment. Thomas Rubel, 32 Nile Street, Abington. And Zoning Enforcement Officer, this is also an annual appointment. Thomas Rubel, 32 Nile Street, Abington.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint.
Second. Oh, sorry, third.
I got a motion, a second, and a third. Uh, what'd I leave off? Uh, Kara?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me as well. Thank you, guys. Thanks, Kara. Uh, next on the agenda, set June 20th, 2020 Town Election Hours.
Sure, um, the board, uh, talked about the, a date at the last meeting, and there was quite a bit of discussion about the voting hours. And it was, uh, you agreed that you wanted to think about it a little bit more, have staff go back and talk about it a little bit more, and regroup. Uh, so we've done that. We met with Donna, uh, and Deli, and, and the two chiefs and others, Jen. And I'll, I'll let Donna do all the talking, because this is really her baby, but we, we think we have a pretty good, uh, a pretty good solution, and I'll, I'll let her discuss it and talk about the, the votes that she needs. Maybe one last thing I'll say before I turn it over to her, just as a side note. Today was actually a local election in Sandwich where I live. And it was interesting, I had, did, I voted by mail for the regular local election, but I didn't realize that it was, uh, there was additionally a special state election for our state senator who, uh, resigned early in his term, and so they piggybacked and did it on the same day, so I went to vote in person, uh, today for that part of it. And it was just interesting, you know, the plexiglass and all the sanitizing stations, et cetera. I wanted to see how it went, and, uh, you know, it went very smoothly, and, uh, I'm, I'm sure that Donna has all the right procedures in place, working with Deli and others to, to make this happen safely. So I, uh, just thought I'd pass that observation along, you know. I'll let Donna take it from here.
Sounds good.
I have been working with Deli, um, constantly. Uh, there's updates all the time. Polling places are exempt to a degree because we don't have to stick to the 10, the gathering of 10 people, because I have four. because we don't have to stick to the ten, the gathering of ten people because I have four precincts in the same polling place, but I still have to keep the numbers down. So I'm asking tonight if you will consider voting to have the polling hours last for six hours. Um, starting at noon time and extending to six o'clock. Uh, we had discussed whether it would be better to ten to four, but the conclusion was that it would be better from twelve to six, allowing people that may have to work to try to schedule time if they feel that they have to vote in person. Um, we do have, I have alerted all the equipment that we will need. Uh, after the meeting, Scott Duffy uh said that he would, he would be able to have EMTs that could monitor temperatures of people as they're going in to make sure that nobody is entering. Um, being ill, there will still be a face mask um referendum in place. So people will have to have some kind of face covering. Uh, we will have some face masks there for people who show up without them. But it is required both in the town and still in the state that people wear face masks. We will make sure that they are spaced six feet apart. Um, I I have had quite a number of of my regular workers who have stepped up and said that they are willing, considering all the precautions that we're taking, that they're willing to work. So um, I do, I do suggest six hours to allow for the fact that it will, I think it will give people enough time to plan. And it also doesn't have to include um lunch breaks. So that's, that's what I'm requesting tonight, is that you take a vote for six hours.
Okay, so Donna, you're you're a hundred percent with that. Uh, you've talked to Deli, Deli, you're on board. I mean, you guys are are covered and and you guys execute the plan according to what you send in the package list?
Yep, we're going to um go to the schools and actually map it out and figure out exactly how many uh voting booths we can get safely in there. And uh, Deli and I have been working very closely. Um, we sat in on a conference call the other day. Uh, unfortunately, it didn't cover what we thought it was going to cover, but um today we were miss, we were listening to one about um meeting, which there's a bill, there's a bill being proposed now that would allow you to take a vote to lower the quorum. But it hasn't passed everything. But yes, Deli and I have been working very close, six feet apart, however.
I even gave her a chair today.
You did? I came to actually came down and stole it, but that's okay.
So so Deli, everything that Donna's got laid out in the plan now uh makes sense to you and and it passes the Board of Feltz, you know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And Donna, I I mean, I can come and volunteer that day too, if you need me. I'm not a Rockland resident, but
You don't have to be. To work in an election, you don't have to live in town.
If you want me there, I'll be there.
That would be great.
All right.
Okay, so with that said, uh, we have the election scheduled for Saturday, June twentieth, two thousand twenty. Uh, the town clerk is asking us to vote for the twelve to six for the hours. I'll I'll entertain a motion.
I think that was for twelve to six.
I got a motion from Rich, so I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all is in favor, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes, as long as I can vote for you.
Thanks, Mike.
Hey, what about me?
Oh, yeah, you too.
Ms. Nyman?
That's a yes for me.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
All right, and myself, that's unanimous. Uh, Donna and uh Deli, I I appreciate you guys uh collaborating on this to come up with uh I I guess the safest option for the community. Uh, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, FY twenty and FY twenty-one budget. Doug?
Thanks, Mike, and maybe I'll just say one last thing about the election before I move on. You know, I an election, I think, is always a very difficult thing to, you know, successfully accomplish because it's just tricky, it involves a lot of people, a lot of logistics, and so I can only imagine the pressure and the stress with all these added logistics that Donna's having to figure out right now with this. It's really unheard of for any any living town clerk right now to have to deal with this. I appreciate all the extra effort that she's having to do and working with Deli and others. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Uh, moving on to the budget, I I was hoping to do uh two things. I wanted to just very quickly uh run through a a brief PowerPoint presentation that I did um with you, Mike, and Larry, and members of the School Department and School Committee uh about a week, week and a half ago. I thought it'd be helpful for the full board to see that. And then I'll, from there, I'll I'll get into more detail on the numbers, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
All right. So give me one second while I find the file. There we go. All right, so again, the um, the purpose of this meeting was really, uh, you know, just continuing the good communication we've had with the with the School Department all along. We have an excellent relationship and we've been making sure to to communicate regularly and uh whatever it was, about eleven days or or so ago, we had a a meeting with Dr. Cron, Jane Hackett, Colleen Forlizzi, the Chair and Vice Chair of their School Committee, uh as well as, you know, Biz and Jen from our team and you, Mike, and Larry, uh, just to give everybody make sure everybody was on the same page with with what we're looking at, with our assumptions, with the budget and all the reductions that we're going to have to make because this is such a uh um such a difficult time. So again, I just thought I would um briefly go through this. Hang on one second. Okay, so um this first slide, I'm going to kind of go quick again because the the audience really was for a prior meeting, but my point here was just to stress that when we are looking at all these projections, I wanted to go through sort of what some of the the basis was for, because these really are and and are extreme changes from what we were um, what we were doing and what we were projecting and assuming just a couple of months ago. So this graph just shows the dramatic increase in unemployment claims. Eleven days ago, it was up to thirty-three and a half million claims, and it's obviously a a lot higher since then. And, you know, the Fed was talking about how the actual unemployment number could reach as high as twenty-four percent, which is just, you know, a staggering number. The this is the uh projected FY twenty revenue deficit uh that we're currently in. We've talked about this number before. We've already talked about about all these actions, so I'm not going to go over them again in much detail, other than that, you know, we're we're following through on this plan. You know, I have unfortunately had to furlough thirty-five people, either partially or fully. Uh, I did have an opportunity to speak with a few of them uh yesterday in person when they were some of those that were working reduced hours that happened to be in the town hall. And I just want to thank all the employees because they've all been very understanding, you know, but the ones that have furloughed have had to deal with the the stress and the anxiety of this, but they're they're team players and they understand what's happening and why, and and I just appreciate all their professionalism. So this is going over the FY twenty deficit, which we are closing. Talking about our FY twenty-one assumptions, which is really the main purpose of today's uh discussion. I've put subject to change because, you know, we're updating this continually as we get new information, but we're obviously going to have to lock it down um at a point in time so we can set the warrant to go to town meeting. Um, again, we were, we're hoping to get more guidance from from the state about state aid, but we really didn't, didn't get any good news. Uh, we met with Senator Keenan, um, we talked to Rep. DeCoste. You know, we've, we've uh done a lot of outreach. And the information that we have is that the state is on track for a potentially up to a billion-dollar deficit in the current year FY twenty. And their potential deficit next year in FY twenty-one could be as high as five billion dollars. So it's just catastrophic financial news. Uh, it is likely that the state is going to do an interim one-twelfth budget uh for the month of July. And when they say one-twelfth, they actually mean, you know, not one-twelfth of what they normally would have spent, but it's an actual reduction. It's an actual lower base, which they'll then take one-twelfth of. And that uh, it's been told to us that we're most likely not going to see a final state budget in place until August. And, you know, the frame of reference that a lot of town administrators and town accountants are looking at is what happened with the the budget cuts, the nine-seat cuts back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and everything we've heard is that it's going to be as bad, if not worse than that. And then most importantly, we should expect cuts to local aid in chapter seventy, because that's the thing that's most important for for Rockland because we're so heavily dependent on that. Just more kind of backup on where we're coming from, but Biz had been asking the Department of Revenue about guidance. And they basically said, if you look at the bottom, you know, definitely don't prepare to have a budget that shows significant increases like was projected before the COVID crisis. So all bad news. We we talked to the auditors. They also recommended expecting a decrease in state aid and and look at a ten percent cut compared to what we were projecting originally, uh, which is essentially like the FY nineteen level. And the Mass Taxpayers Association and even some others from the state are saying it could be even worse than that. But that that ten percent reduction is what we and uh and our financial team, as well as most other towns are are looking at projecting because it's a balance. You don't want to, you don't want to over, uh, you don't want to predict something that's a lot worse than what will actually materialize, because then you would have done a lot of cuts that you didn't have to do. But you don't want to, you know, paint a rosy scenario that isn't realistic either. So we're we're trying to be prudent uh with a ten percent assumption. So our revenue deficit, you can see the components of it. The the biggest component, as we've talked about, is a loss of state aid. We were one of the communities, because of the type of community we are, we were going to benefit significantly from the initial governor's proposed budget. And now with the, with the economic conditions we're at, uh, this is the other side of the coin. You know, we're going to be disproportionately hard disproportionately hurt compared to a lot of other communities because of that. So state aid is the biggest driver here. Uh, it's a two-point-eight million dollar projected revenue deficit next year. Uh, we spoke to the school and explained that their portion of having to help us balance the budget is one-point-four million. And the town shares also one-point-four. That's comprised of both the regular general government operating budget uh as well as a whole bunch of other things, health insurance, pensions, debt, workers' comp, et cetera. Won't go into detail here. This was important for the School Department because we always try to be very transparent with them about how we calculate that seventy-thirty split. Um, so this shows uh the math behind there, and we could always get into that more if you wanted. We also discussed with them what we think uh the numbers are actually going to look like. So we, we talked about our original uh what the original appropriation would be for the Rockland Public Schools and what that reduction is going to have to be, what the new appropriation will need to be. Same thing on the general government side. And then we're also looking at pulling in some other revenue. Uh, seven-hundred-eighty-seven thousand from other sources like free cash and stabilization uh to help uh all sides um balance the budget. And that seven-eighty-seven that I just mentioned is made up uh mostly of stabilization, some additional overlay, dog fund and and pulling a little bit more out of the OPEB trust fund. And then most importantly, we we talked about the calendar because this has really been uh critical. Uh, so we're looking at tonight is is presenting a balanced budget to you. The Finance Committee's meeting tomorrow night, so we'll present the same information to them unless you give me some different direction tonight. Uh, we have, in two weeks, you have another meeting, and I assume the Finance Committee can similarly schedule another meeting if you wanted to have any any changes or additional discussions about the budget. Um, preferably, we wouldn't wait until June second and June third, but with the calendar the way it is, we could could wait until then, could also meet in between now and then uh next week uh if we needed to. Uh, during this whole time, between when we met with the School Department and and uh and June third, they're doing their thing. You know, Dr. Cron and his team are working with the School Committee, and, you know, they have a lot of difficult and very complicated issues uh that they're dealing with. And then ultimately, for a June twenty-second town meeting, we need to uh post the warrant no later than June eighth, preferably earlier, but certainly no later than that uh for a June eighth town meeting. So before I uh pull this down, were there any questions on on what I just went over? Any comments or clarifications? Okay, great. So the next thing I think that I would like to talk about is really just getting right into the numbers uh for FY twenty-one that I included in your packet. So one document, maybe I will actually, um, at least I think I'll share this one as well on the screen. You know what? Bear with me here. I'm I'm kind of waiting this. I'm going to go, I'm going to go on to the next one and I'm going to come back to that. Here we go. So this document that hopefully you're going to see shortly, I know the numbers are small. I'll make it a little bigger. This is our attempt at going over uh the balanced budget that we need to um that we need to show. Have on the left-hand side what the original budget was, the two-point-eight million on the on the right side. Um, and then you'll see the the seven-eighty-seven that we spoke about earlier. Uh, you'll see the uh the school uh reduction. I only show one number because that's not for us to say how uh they're going to choose to to make those reductions. And then as we go down, as we go down the list, you'll see there's a lot of cuts um that we have, that we have to make in all the, all the general government departments. And I I should have highlighted, and this uh, all these numbers that we're showing, all of them, when we talk about cuts or reductions, I'm not speaking about year to year. I'm talking about a reduction from what we had earlier planned uh for FY twenty-one. So we originally planned on spending more money in FY twenty-one. And now that increase is having to go down. That's what, when I, so when I speak about a reduction, all these are reductions from what was um originally planned uh for FY twenty-one. I'll come back to the to the subtotals in a minute. I want to um end the screen share, actually. Yeah, I think I'm going to end the screenshot, but I'm going to uh highlight in a minute how all these cuts total five-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, there's an additional hundred-and-thirty thousand um that we're going to fund uh through some reductions in our capital budget, our capital articles and free cash uh to get to the total of six-fifty-four. And all that, when you add it up with the school numbers, uh, equals our our two-point-eight. So I think that that some of the main things that I wanted to talk about in going over uh all these numbers is just again, we've had excellent communication with the schools and I uh appreciate that they're having to deal with a very large gap. Um, and it's, it's really frustrating for both sides, for the schools as well as the town, because we've all made big improvements in the operations over the years. And and I'm, you know, the longer I'm here, the more I'm learning about some of the advances that have made with better staffing and different departments and and certainly big improvements in the School Department. So I just kind of wanted to stress that it's just really difficult on the school side and on the town side for us to have to to have to make these cuts and make these reductions when we, you know, we're making such great strides. Even with, even with um I'm going to skip that part. Uh, I think one of the major underlying parts I wanted to talk about in the general government departments is the plan that I'm laying out for you tonight does not include layoffs of existing personnel. Um, so well, I'll talk about some of the specific reductions that we're doing. Um, but I'm trying to avoid laying off any people that are currently employed with the town. We have thirty-five people that are furloughed. And I hope to ultimately um bring them all back. Um, but in my opinion, you know, the town is staffed uh on the general government side, which is all I can speak to, very, very um thin. And as we've mentioned before, uh, while we've had some good accomplishments over the years in the past, bringing staffing levels up to where they are, we're still really understaffed in many, many departments. And as I've mentioned numerous times before, there's entire departments that we need that we don't even have at all, mainly the pla- a planning department, the facilities department, and a natural resources department. So again, my my goal here has been to avoid any layoffs of 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 existing personnel that we have right now. Some of these reductions that you'll see, for example, in the fire department, do include uh cutting funding so that we're not going to fill a position that's funded but is currently unfilled. So the reason why that's been the case in the fire department is because it's a civil service department and that the hiring rules and civil service are very complicated with lists and you have to really follow a lot of uh tight rules. Um, and so that's made it difficult in the past to fill all the positions with qualified applicants. So we are not filling some funded positions that we've desperately needed to fill and wanted to fill to have better staffing. Um, but we're going to, we're going to cut those. We're also looking at reducing some positions from full-time to part-time. An example of that, you'll see if you look through the details in the the tax collector's office, uh, making one per, one position go from full-time to part-time. We're also looking at eliminating um some summer part-time positions, for example, in the in the Parks Department. They would be eliminating their their summer part-time help. And then we're also looking at, a- as I alluded to, when I was showing the screen earlier, with that hundred-and-thirty thousand balance at the bottom, we're going to eliminate, reduce, and restructure uh some of our capital articles funded from free cash um to get to the required target that we need to have. There's some things that we're, we're currently um funding, for example, some summer staff and the Youth Commission because um funding, for example, some summer staff and the youth commission because there's still so much uncertainty about whether we're going to be able to have some of these programs or not. Um so those are, those are kind of some some things that we're looking at. If we are not able to fill some of those services and we had to cut more, that's an example of something that we could do. I should also highlight that with the salaries um has been a a complicated thing for me to try to tackle in such a such a very short compressed timeframe because we have collective bargaining agreements that are in effect and go through all of next year. And for the non-union employees, um whether they be department heads or or non-department heads, you know, most of them uh have individual employment contracts, uh some expire, um some uh don't expire and continue into next year with raises. Um so it's uh it's it's not something where I could very easily go in and try to do a wage freeze across the board given the collective bargaining agreements as well as the plethora of uh individual employment contracts. Now, I should highlight for you and for the public to know that a number of department heads and even non-department heads that have individual employment contracts did come to me and said they would forego their raise into next year because they want to try to help. But you know, I didn't, I I wasn't approached by every single person with a contract. And again, I just don't have the time to try to to try to sort that out across the board um with with literally just a matter of days left. So what you'll see in the plan is um I feel I it's my responsibility to take a zero for me personally. I'm doing that, but I'm leaving in the uh the contractual increases for those uh that have contracts in place and for those that don't uh the two and a half percent raise, I'm leaving that in there. There were a few employees whose salaries were are still way out of whack too low and we had previously planned on more significant increases, market corrections to get them where they should be. We can't afford to do that now and I've spoken to those people so they understand that. So they just have the more modest two and a half percent. Um but I just wanted to be, uh I just wanted to be clear that uh that is uh uh still in the budget, which which you'll see when when you look through the detail. Now, the one, I think um, there's one other uh side note I I should highlight in the IT budget, which um you won't really see the detail, but I want to mention it now before I forget it, which is just like Jen mentioned with her CPA Affordable Housing Project uh that uh according to our town charter, in addition uh to you putting that on the warrant, we also need finance committee consent and we'll need that with this other item as well. In the IT department, uh they're looking to upgrade our our voiceover internet protocol phone system. They have the funding for it in their regular operating budget because this new system that they're looking to do a lease purchase will actually save us money. So we don't need any additional funding for it. But with the Municipal Modernization Act a couple of years ago, uh they put in a new requirement that any lease purchase uh requires a separate uh two-thirds affirmative vote at town meeting. So when you go to reopen the warrant uh after the budget discussion, in addition to the CPA article, I'd also like you to uh approve a separate article uh so the IT department can get a new phone system. Again, there's no incremental cost. It can be uh fully funded in their operating budget. So I wanted to mention that now before I forgot. Um going back to the issues I was just discussing a minute ago with how we're how we're getting to the necessary reductions. Um the point I wanted to mention is uh my goal was to be able to hit the entire $654,000 uh target purely with the operating reductions that I that I've outlined for you and and given you all the detail behind. But I just don't feel uh comfortable hitting that full amount uh without really tearing into some core services and literally like, you know, pulling police officers and firefighters off the street and, you know, reducing library hours. So that's why, you know, we're looking to to do the reductions to some of these capital articles and using that uh the savings from those reductions for this temporary funding to get us through. Now, one very interesting um piece to this complicated puzzle is Chief Duffy has been doing some incredible work uh with the State 911 Committee and it looks very promising that we are going to get a significant uh 911 grant. It's going to be a reimbursable grant dedicated uh specifically and solely to cover our costs for our regional dispatch. So that's great news, but the the timing is not good because we're not getting the official award now when we need it. It's most likely going to come in uh sometime in late July. So we can't book that uh that grant now because we don't physically have it in hand, uh but we do believe it's coming. Uh so I think what the plan should be is we go forward with June 20, on June 22nd with a town meeting with a budget, something like what I'm presenting tonight. And then later in July, uh when we get that grant, um that will cover our approximately $300,000 of our regional dispatch costs. And then maybe a month later, the state budget comes out uh in August. Um and then I believe we should have a a special town meeting sometime after that where we can then use uh that grant can then help essentially, you know, restore that that use of the of the free cash that was making up the difference in our operating budget cuts from our from our capital cuts um and potentially could also uh reduce some of the other uh operating reductions uh that we had to do. That's all, of course, assuming all of our other assumptions with state aid held exactly perfect. Um most likely, the state budget will come out, something different than what we're pro- projecting could be better, could be worse. If it's worse, we're going to have to do more cuts. If it's better, uh you know, we'll be able to, you know, to restore some of these reductions. Uh so I just wanted to highlight that while it's, you know, certainly unusual uh to be talking about pulling some capital articles off and restructuring some capital articles to use some of that funding to be able to make up operating reductions. These are just highly unusual financial times. Um but again, given the likelihood of this um fire department uh reimbursement grant for a regional dispatch, um I think it, I think all the pieces of the puzzle are are aligning. Um we've talked a lot about uh whether a 1/12 budget would make sense or not. Uh we really don't think it does right now because again, we're still going to have to have a budget with all these cuts in it. Um and I we just think it makes sense to to have town meeting, you know, address our FY 20 issues, get that out of the way um and then move forward sometime later in the summer or fall with a special when the uh when the new state budget information comes out. Um and again, you know, we might not even have the option to do the 1/12 budget depending on what what the state decides over the next number of uh next number of weeks. The other thing I wanted to mention too is that um there's a lot of confusing information about the new reopening plan with the governor and and town meetings. Uh but the one thing we did confirm today is that town meetings, and that's the capital T, capital M, town meetings, annual town meetings, special town meetings. Uh those are exempt from the 10-person limit as talked about for public gatherings. Other times that people talk about town meetings not being exempt, what I believe they're referring to are like planning board, public hearings and border, so regular board of selectmen meetings, those kinds of town meetings are not exempt um from that limit and that's why we're doing Zoom tonight. Uh but we think, you know, six weeks from now um town meeting um could uh reasonably be done. Uh we've, we don't need to vote a specific um location when you want to get to talking about town meeting. But I think the date makes sense. That's what most other towns are doing, or mid to late June. Um and we can certainly talk more about the location if you'd like. Um maybe the last thing I'll do is just go back one page and share my screen to talk about the capital articles that we're reducing um to help close the gap. So this is our use of free cash. This left side here um was sort of the original plan and the right side is our new plan. So you see where uh you know, we're taking a number of actions uh to close FY 20. Um and then in addition, um we're also taking actions to help us with uh FY 21. And in particular, what I've highlighted in yellow down here, these are all like the capital articles that we'd be doing. Um and what I've highlighted in yellow are the things that we're changing, either restructuring uh with a lease or completely eliminating like a highway truck or cutting in half like the IT upgrades that we need or only getting one police cruiser instead of two. Um these are all all the changes highlighted in yellow that's helping us fund uh to get to our full number. Uh so I know that's a lot of information. I apologize if it was a little disjointed. I was just trying to think about how to best um explain it all, but um but with that, I hope you've had time to look at this a little bit ahead of time. You do have the detail behind that one spreadsheet so you can see line by line each individual department, where each penny's coming from, you know, or we're also taking money away from training and from, you know, from dues. I mean, uh all kinds of things that, you know, best practices um should have us fund. But with that, I'll stop talking and I'll I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Doug. Uh Rich, any questions?
So I I don't have any questions. Um I was able to kind of go through this and and look at this budget and uh I do have to say um the financial team really, um you can tell that there was a lot of work. Um a lot of insight, a lot of forethought into this on um, you know, uh what we're facing and also the situation of the town, uh to be honest, to to go through uh what we are looking at for a revenue shortfall and come up with ways to, uh as Doug is, as you said, we are um we we tend to be short-staffed in a lot of departments compared to other towns already uh and to to be able to go through this um keep uh most of the departments or all the departments intact, you know, um while they're going to see some some cuts, um you know, in in some different things, I I really think uh given the circumstances, this was as uh as good a job as as could have been done. So I I want to say thank you to uh you, Biz, um Jen, the entire team, everybody, all the department heads. Um I I will say something about this town uh in in how the departments um work. When things like this happen, you 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 read and see and hear about some other towns and some infighting. Every single department head um put all things aside and work together to come up with what is the best solution uh in a a very, very difficult time. So I want to say thank you to every department head and everyone who's put work into this.
Can I just jump in, Mike? Rich, thank you for saying that because you literally were just was reading my mind because um we can't, you know, Biz and Jen and I can't take, you know, the credit for this because we reached out to every single department head. That's where we got these suggestions and these ideas and uh just like you said, there was there was no infighting at all and there was no resentment. Why is one department doing more or less than another? There was absolutely none of that. And you know, the process, I'm so happy you said this because I I should have talked more about our process. We know Biz and I and Jen and I were working on the total numbers, the big picture, the revenue deficit. Then we reached out to department and to say, all right, like, we need help, you know, come to us with ways that were that we can accomplish this without decimating, you know, your your services. And in some instances, the department heads gave us options, complete list of options. And we said, okay, we're willing to do A, B, and C, but we're not willing to do D because we think that's going to be too much and that's going to really pull us back. So there were, you know, there was a number of other reductions that were put on the table that if we need to, we'll have to do and and they offered that up. And so I completely echo everything you just said, Rich. So thank you for bringing that up.
Awesome. Thank you, Rich. Uh, Larry.
You know, you can't um, you can't put a price on uh what the rest of you guys have been doing as a financial team. Um, I don't know, it's a lot of not only just be in the situation, but to be in a new town and and uh still trying to land all the ropes and and you get this all dumped in your lap, no offense, Doug, but uh but uh it landed in a good lap. Yeah, and uh with Jen and Biz and uh the department heads, I I just can't thank you enough. Uh it really warms my heart. I'm, you know, I've been around a long time. I sound like Jerry Delprette now coming to the town meeting, you know? But I have been around a long time and see the extent of interdepartmental cooperation if if now there's opposed to years past, um as bad as things are, we're we're way better off than we used to be. Those people who can go back to those days. Um some of you will agree and there'll be those that don't agree, but uh for sure, we're we're way better off than we used to be. And as tough as this is, uh you know, there's there's a glimmer of light and a glimmer of hope and and uh everybody seems to be on the same page. That's a wonderful thing. I just want to thank uh the two mics uh for sticking uh sticking together during the crisis and um really with with Rich and the camera joining us, hiring Doug, Biz and Jen, it's the best things we ever did for the town of Rockland. And um if they remember anything for us, it may be just that. So I I just want to thank everybody involved for the tremendous effort and the time and the energy that I can imagine the hours that, you know, they go above 35 hours a week, if you will, to be put into changing the budget daily and and and, you know, I hate to use the word yada, 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 but you know, goes on for me. Just thank you, thank you, and again, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh Mr. Mullen.
Um I really want to, um I haven't in a while, but really agree with Larry um on everything that he mentioned. Um the uh the saying that, oh, you know, with every crisis uh comes an opportunity. Um uh like has never rained more proof in Rockland um over the past two years. And um, oh, you know, two years ago right now, we were dealing with a crisis. Um and tonight, oh, we're dealing with a financial crisis. And uh you know, one of the things, the fact that we're going through this now with Doug, with Jen, with Biz, uh and with all our department heads together, like with the school department together. Um uh uh we're accomplishing as as crazy difficult uh as this is for everybody. Uh you know, we're doing it, oh, oh, you know, thanks to the leadership of of everyone involved, we're doing it together in as one town. And uh you know, that speaks volumes and uh you know, like all of us, oh, you know, and I've been made fun of um a lot in the last few weeks for, oh, you know, praising Doug, praising Jen, praising Biz and, oh, you know, those just aren't hollow words. They they really mean something because what uh you know, what we're dealing with here, oh, like in what we're seeing our the town pull through once again, oh, it is incredible and it all has to, it all has to do with leadership. Oh, leadership in our town hall, leadership in our departments and oh, like and we're getting through this and the fact that we're able to do this uh you know, with the school department as well and like and working with them. Uh you know, those of us who have been in this for um a little bit of a time, oh, now know that 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 always hasn't been the case. And um um and that's extremely important as well. And Doug, I just want to really, uh you know, thank you and everyone I just mentioned for that because uh you know, Rick was right on, I'm sorry, Rich was right on. Oh, you know, Larry was right on and it's, oh, you know, these are going to be our tough few months, oh, and probably tough year or so, but um, uh you know, we will get through this together. So I don't have anything. Um I'll always, as Rich mentioned, um I think the uh the plan uh that's been laid out on the town side um has been incredibly insightful. It's been thoughtful. Um and I'll and we'll go forward from that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Kara?
Well, I think my colleagues have summed it up perfectly. I won't go on for too long, but um just want to say thank you to Doug for the presentation. It was thorough as always. Jen, Biz, thank you and to our department heads who are working together. I know you have limited resources that you're working with to come up with this budget. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Kara. Uh so Doug, I mean, obviously, we uh we we talk quite a bit uh throughout the course of the week and and at one point early in this week, you know, you presented this to me and 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 honestly, I didn't say it, but I I was kind of shocked that you were able to uh so quickly with all the moving parts uh that you, Biz and Jen were able to put together uh a balanced budget for for the rest of this year. so quickly with all the moving parts that you, Biz, and Jen were able to put together a balanced budget for, for the rest of this year. And, and everything that you guys have projected for next year in order to get, get to where we need to get. To what everybody else has said, you know, I think I might have teased Mike a little bit because, you know, it does seem as though he's always saying, you know, what a great job you guys are doing, which, which is true, you know, and
It was love and friendship.
Yeah, yeah, we know. But, but sitting back and thinking about where we came from and, and kind of the road that we've traveled over the last few years, there is really no group of people that I'd like to be, you know, in this position for us. You guys really stuck with it. Working from home is a challenge and it's funny because, because I'll, I'll shoot you a phone call and then you'll ignore my phone call, Doug, and, and you'll say, I'll call you back. Because you're on a Zoom meeting, followed by another Zoom meeting, followed by another Zoom meeting, and you're meeting with everyone. And I think that that, you know, I don't want to just continue to praise, you know, because it is our department heads as well, but I think the communication that you've, you've opened up through all the departments and the transparency that you've given to them and, and kind of the, I guess the word I'd be looking for is, you know, engagement, you know, you've given them the ability to really direct their department and have that say. You know, you didn't come through and just start making arbitrary cuts within that department. You gave them, you, you said, you know, what do you need? What, what are your, you know, minimal staffing needs? You know, what, what can you do without? At one point, we talked about some of the capital needs and, and, you know, we talked about would they have made this request if COVID was going on at the time that they made the request and you went back? And, and it's, it's amazing to see the reductions that you guys were able to come up with. I don't want to go on for too long. I, I think we could go on and on and on about, you know, how proud we are as a board to, to represent you guys, but also, you know, have you guys represent us, but also the great department heads that we have in town. Just, you know, I'm thoroughly impressed, you know? There was rumors about you. I made some phone calls before we hired you and they said that you were a, what was the XL genius? Was that what they said, Mike?
I think so. Maybe lightning in a bottle, I think was.
Oh, I said that. I said lightning in a bottle, but, but some people, somebody told me that he will, he will have a spreadsheet for everything. He will have a PowerPoint for everything, but every step of the way, every page is poignant, right? There's, there's no wasted pages. Everything is, is that next level, high level communication that we're looking for, not just for us, but also for the members of the community. You know, it's, it's very simple when somebody, you know, makes these bombastic statements online, you know, about, about budgets and, and revenues, to go back and just pick one of the, one of the spreadsheets and just put it up there and say, this is, this is it. This is, this is what we're talking about, people. This isn't, this isn't a mismanagement job. This isn't a case where the town mismanaged itself in, into a 1.3 million dollar revenue pool. This is a global pandemic. You know, it, it wasn't anybody's fault. This is, this is thrown upon us and thrown upon every other, you know, municipality across the world. So, you know, the fact that you guys have been able to keep your heads about it and, and come up with a balanced budget for, for this year and present a balanced budget for next year, you know, kudos to you guys. Thank you.
Mike, thank you. And you guys, you're embarrassing me with all the every, every week.
I know.
I, I did mention it to my wife at some point and she laughed at me and she said, enjoy it while you have it because it's not going to last.
All right, next year is different.
Right, right. But, and I, I don't want to like call out specific people, but I do want to thank Biz particularly because, you know, this is hard stuff to do no matter what. And then it's a little bit more difficult when you're at home and you don't have all your files and your desktop and all that stuff. But just so people know, I mean, Biz had pretty major foot surgery and she's been laid up, you know, with a bum foot. She has like no mobility. She's laying on the couch and she's cranking out budget spreadsheets and, you know, zooming with me all day long to helping solve the problem. So, I mean, she's really been going above and beyond and I just don't want to embarrass her, but I just want to let people know that, that, you know, there's many people that would just be out sick now and wouldn't be as productive. And, you know, she's a powerhouse. So may, wanted to make sure to say that. Also, one thing I didn't touch on that I should have mentioned is, you know, there's a lot of talk in Washington about a potential another round of stimulus money that could help state and local governments with revenue deficits. And Jen and I were actually lucky enough to participate in a statewide conference call with Senator Warren. And she went through the whole bill in detail that the, that the House, that the House passed that incorporated some of the, some of the parts that, that she and others from the Senate were encouraging. And so we're just going to cross our fingers and hope, you know, that, you know, one day they talk about how they're talking about it. The next day they say it's dead on arrival and, you know, who knows? But, you know, we're certainly gonna position ourselves to capitalize on it if we ever do get, get some of that relief. And then the other point I thought I'd mention is we did talk previously about the Plymouth County administering the 90 million. We did have a, was on one of those numerous Zoom calls with the county, county commissioner, the chair of the, of the, of the group, along with all the other towns in the county, going over what their plan is, how it's going to be administered. We're still waiting for the actual forms. We know what our potential allotment could be on their first phase one portion, which should be ending June 30th. So as soon as we get the specific guidance and the paperwork and the forms, we will be all over it, both the town side and the school side. Biz has already got all the accounting. She has separate COVID funds where she's been tracking all the spending. So, you know, we'll make sure to capture every penny that we're able to there. So I just wanted to assure you of that. So with that, if, if you guys are, are good with this, I think it would make sense to reopen the warrant. Well, we should probably talk about whatever order you want to do it. Set the date for town meeting for June 22nd at 7:00 PM and reopen the warrant for those two items, the CPA article and the IT lease purchase for the phone system.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion to set the date for annual town, annual and special town meeting for June 27th, 7:00 PM.
Make that motion.
I have a motion, a motion and a second. All those in favor, Mr. Ryan? Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. And I'll also entertain a motion to reopen the warrant for the purpose of adding additional articles.
I'll make that motion.
I have motion and a second, a second. All is in favor, Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself. Okay, Doug, unanimous, you got them both.
Muted, Doug. Doug, muted?
Thank you. Sorry about that. Do you want to leave the warrant open, Mike? Or do you want to close it, close it again now that you've added those two articles?
Well, we need to add more.
I'm sorry, hang on, Biz. What are the other ones?
The other ones, if we're going with the capital, as we've stated, would be the mini fire engine lease and the fire administrative lease.
Thank you. So we're looking at a total of four new articles, the CPA, the IT lease purchase, and then two fire department lease purchases. Thank you, Biz. And I think that's it. So you, you could close it. And then if you needed to reopen it and do it again at another meeting, you could. But it's an interesting thing in Rockland how you guys formally open, formally close the warrant, but it might make sense in case something that you don't want on it is suggested.
Sure. Okay, so.
Make a motion to close the warrant?
Well, no, hold on, no, because we gotta, we gotta add, we gotta make a motion for the, for the lease for the mini fire engine and also the fire administration vehicle.
Thank you. Just about to say, thank you, Rich. I have a motion and I heard a second from Larry. Okay, all those in favor? Kara?
Yes.
Rick?
Yep.
Larry?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself. That's a yes. And now I'll entertain a motion to close the warrant.
I closed the warrant.
I got a motion, a motion from Larry, a second from Kara. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kara?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And myself. Okay, Doug, you're all set.
That's great. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to highlight this because it's, it's interesting to me just because it's different. You all know the history of it better than me, but as I was researching this, so in the town, in the town charter, it does talk about how after you guys initially closed the warrant, if you're going to reopen it, which you did tonight, to add in articles, which you did tonight, you need to obtain the consent of the finance committee for each of those articles. It's just interesting because that's, you know, certainly not the case in, in most other towns. And I'm sure there's some history behind it, you know, in, in Rockland and how that ended up being there. And I don't know if that's something that you've had to do much in the past and if that's something as we're looking at charter changes, if there's any desire to look at that, that's certainly, certainly something can be talked about. But talking to John Pumphrey and, you know, this, this is on their agenda for tomorrow night. And I'm, I'm sure there won't be, won't be any issues there. I just wanted to highlight that.
Oh, speaking of that, can we get on to that meeting?
I'm sure, I, I'm sure we can take care of that. Yep.
All right. Beautiful.
Yep.
We all, it wasn't posted or anything, right?
No, so the finance committee meetings are posted just like yours. So it's a, it's a Zoom meeting. It's recorded and then it's, you know, the selection are televised live on cable access TV and also shown on replays. And they're also available for anybody to watch on YouTube. Finance committee meetings are similarly recorded. I don't think they're shown live on cable access, but anybody from the public can go on the RPS website and on their YouTube channel and watch the meeting at any point later. But we don't have these meetings wide open to the public because there's no public hearing portion. There's no public forum portion. But I can certainly, but I can certainly get you guys in the meeting. That's fine.
Right, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, so Doug, we, we kind of skipped ahead. We did the special and annual town meeting already. So now it's up to number six, town administrators report and correspond.
Sure, thank you. Deli, I, I had told Deli earlier, once the, once the part of the election hours with, with her piece, she was definitely free to get off the meeting, but I did just want to highlight that we check in, you know, daily and weekly with her about COVID-19 and, and how cases are looking. And in general, the latest information I've heard from her is good news in that, you know, the number of currently active confirmed cases, you know, is going down in town. You know, many people are recovering. I believe the current number of cases in the community, when we say community, we mean not in the nursing homes, is actually down to only 48 currently. So that's good. I think over 100, 119 people, I believe, have recovered in the community. And certainly the numbers in the nursing homes and the nursing home staff is also going down as well. So that's good news. Police and fire are, are doing well. And when I say doing well, I mean, as it relates to staff being out with COVID or anybody being sick, you know, they have had some people on the fire side who had tested positive, they did the proper quarantines and most have come back. I think one had another recent exposure, so that person is, is being quarantined. It's only been a few. On the police side, everybody's been healthy and then continuing to test negative. So that's really good. I mean, that, that was a huge worry. In the very beginning of this pandemic, we were worried, what do we do if the whole fire department gets out? Are we going to get mutual aid? What's going to happen, you know? So knock on wood, the, the procedures and the protocols that Chief Duffy and Chief Lawland have put in place, you know, have, have, have really worked. The other, I think, big thing I should highlight as it just relates to COVID is, you know, the reopening information that the, you know, the governor put out. So there's been a ton of news about it and there's a ton of information on the website. The one just general thing I'll say for those people that may be in a little bit of a news blackout and maybe haven't been watching it is that it's, they didn't just flick the switch and everything instantaneously opened. You know, that's, it's a more nuanced and careful kind of thoughtful approach that the governor's trying to implement here. There's, there's four different phases in the, in the, the current phase that we're at now and what they're also referring to as, as phase one. Sort of the main businesses that are operating now, which is manufacturing and construction, are able to continue with proper procedures in place. And then also part of what they're calling phase one, but it's starting a week later on May 25th. A number of different types of operations will be, will begin to start operating with limitations. And those include offices, certain kinds of services like limited personal services, hair salons, car washes, some retail with curbside pickup. So these are all things that we have information on our website that links to the state website. So you can tell if you're a business, when are you able to open? What are the rules going to be? And there's, there's some very stringent requirements that each and every business throughout the Commonwealth is going to have to come up with a plan documented in writing, post it and submit it to the state, you know, before they're able to, to operate. So it's, it's not as simple as just opening their doors tomorrow. Local boards of health, our local health agent, Delshaun, is, is working very hard, keeping abreast with the state to make sure she knows what the rules are and how this is all going to be implemented. I think most importantly for, for my operations, I shouldn't say my, for the town government, general government operations, the, the latest guidance we have from the state is, you know, we're going to be considered as an office use for town hall. And so there will be some limited openings that can happen, but it's going to be really tricky. And so we're, we're going to be taking this slow and we have a reopening committee that we formed. We're meeting tomorrow and we're going to be meeting regularly to come up with plans. Because one, one example of some of the complicating factors are for an office use like town hall, there's a requirement that each and every room, each and every office within the building is going to be limited to only 25% capacity. So if we, most of our departments are, you know, three to four people. So that means only one of them is going to be able to be in the office at any one time. And that's going to be very difficult. And so we're going to have to figure that out. We're also going to have to figure out just all the other things like any other normal business. You know, we've already ordered Plexiglas shields. Those are going to be installed this week, but they've looked at things like hallways, which is a major congestion point where people can come into close contact. We may have to make some hallways one way. You know, we're going to have to look at, knowing the tax collector's office can be very busy. People will often line up there when they're paying bills. We're going to have to figure out ways to stagger that. So we have a lot of work to do, but we've done such a good job about keeping people healthy, both our employees as well as the general public. We don't want to blow it now and, and not follow best practices. So I just want to say for the general public, you know, for any business, there's going to be these gradual openings. It's also going to include, you know, outdoor spaces as well. And on the town hall side, you know, we'll certainly be putting out information as we begin to reopen, but we're just going to do it very thoughtfully and, and keep everyone safe. So that's all I have for town administrator updates.
Awesome. Thank you, Doug. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen and the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wow. Okay, thanks, Mike. Kara?
I don't have anything either. Thank you.
Okay, two for two. Rich?
You know, I can't go without saying something.
I knew, I knew the trick was going to end.
No, I just, I want to say congratulations to the, to the seniors. I know in another case of this town stepping up, there have been so many individuals that have stepped up. And I know Lynn Beatrice being one, working with a whole group that she's kind of worked with and they have the adoption of, of all the seniors. Every single senior in this class, 160 kids were adopted by Rockland residents, Rockland people. And what that meant was, you know, they, they talked to the, to the graduate, the, the parents of the graduate, tried to get some information on, on what that, that graduate liked. And baskets were put together, gift cards, drive-bys. I know they're organizing a senior parade. There's just, there's so many people that are doing so many things. It's not just for the school, just for everything. You know, all the activity with the food bank and, and everything, you know, the food pantry. It just kind of, kind of reiterates why I'm, I'm so happy that I have lived my 55 years here. You know, every time that this town sees disaster stress or whatever, it just amazes me on, on how the people step up. And that, it's not the case in, in so many other communities. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who has, who has stepped up in this town, donated and continues to do whatever, whatever they can to make this a better place.
Awesome. Thank you, Rich. Mr. Ryan?
I have a couple of things. A couple of sad notes. Rockland, the police officer, Susie Dowdell, Llewellyn's brother, passed away, Robert.
Rockland, the police officer, Suzie Dowdell, Lawland's brother, passed away, Robert. Our thoughts and prayers are with whoever their family. Abbot to firefighter, former fighter, Austin, whose wife runs the mad dances, he passed away also. Good people. He's a good, good person, good family. Following up on the senior class of 2020, their last day is tomorrow. And the class parade is being on the 27th at 2:00 at and the seniors will be going around. And I'm sure it'll be organized. Police got to know about it. And just one other thing on the opening and I'll correct this with Doug and and really this goes to Deli too because somebody said that the landfill is going to open up full time. And when I went by the landfill today down in Hanover, there were cars lined up on Route 139. And, you know, there was no police control there. There was traffic issues at times and I called up the landfill attendant and asked him, you know, what, if they had any kind of plans on the opening and and any kind of police detail or any kind of problems. He's expecting it to be mobbed that day and how are how are two guys going to handle the entire? There may be a rush on the place. Hasn't been open for a couple of weeks. And if you see down in in Hanover, it was busy there and and they go every week all the time. So just something to think about and and to plan for us so that we don't end up somebody trying to go over Beech Hill and you backed up to the top of the hill because people want to go left into the landfill. And that's it. That pleasant note.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. You know, I really don't have anything. I think there was a lot of good information presented tonight to the residents. You know, I think all of my, you know, fellow selectmen had had some great comments earlier on in the night and and Rich's comments there at the end about the seniors and the way the members of the community are stepping up to support them as well. You know, that was going to be part of mine. I did take part in the adoption process and you know, it's a it's a great program. I don't know where it came from, but but it was a tremendous idea and it's great to see the level of participation. Yeah, to Rich's point, every time that there's something, you know, I can remember a few years ago when when there were several seniors that that passed away. The way the town came together, every single time Rockland's down, the people pick it back up and hopefully that's the case again this time around. It's not over yet. You know, everybody still continue to stay vigilant. You know, we'll get there. We'll get reopened eventually, you know, which is following the governor's guidelines for reopening. I know there's a lot of people that are chomping at the bit to get out there and and I get it. But we're not at that place yet. So we'll just stay vigilant, you know, probably a few more weeks, maybe a month, and hopefully things will start getting back to to normal. In the meantime, wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day this weekend. And definitely try to take part in the decorating doors for the veterans. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And myself. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you and stay safe, Rockland. Good night.